I will call this meeting to order. And first please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, Madam Treasurer, if you'd like to give us financial report.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're just completed the first quarter of fiscal year. Now into the second quarter, we've received about seven percent of expected revenue, spent about twenty-one percent of our budget, which is actually all going to plan as we as we expected it to be. We're waiting our tax income distribution payment in November, which should be quite substantial and will be able to let us know from there what the rest of the year looks like. So hopefully in a couple of months, I'll be able to give you that information. So as in previous months, I've spotlighted specific categories of expenditures. And this month I want to focus on public safety. So I happen to be the liaison, as you all know, to the Public Services Committee. And in terms of public safety, we spend for we budgeted, I should say, four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, which roughly pays for sixteen hours per day to sometimes twenty-four hours a day of coverage by an off-duty Montgomery County police officer. The four hundred and nineteen thousand pays for salaries, payroll taxes, workers' compensation, legal liability insurance, management service for all of that. And these officers that that come around town are issuing traffic citations and warnings, parking citations, sometimes if there's a nine-one-one call that comes in, that is, a nine-one-one dispatch call that comes in from a resident, they also respond to the scene. And they document reportable crimes and incidents accordingly. They also respond proactively in terms of if they see something that poses a danger, such as tree branches that are kind of overhanging, if there are streetlights that are out. Maybe someone has a flat tire or there are groups that are congregating in kind of common spaces, but in overnight, you know, parks or something like that. They are aware, fully aware of the recent issues that some of us have experienced with respect to check washing, which is when someone is either mailing, putting a check in one of the various mailboxes that are around town, or perhaps even delivering to the post office directly. They're aware that there has been this and have reported accordingly, the check thefts and forgeries that have taken place. And each month, the town receives an aggregated report so that there's an understanding of trends as it relates to citations, as well as other kind of crimes that that might be occurring. This is just a general comment that if there are people listening to this afterwards, if there are general questions about public safety, residents are very welcome to contact me as liaison and you're very welcome to attend next Tuesday session, which is next, the next committee meeting. And that's all I wanted to report on.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, the check in November is a big, big deal.
Big deal.
And we're able to forecast with that accurately, how do you look at?
Exactly.
You have to wait for it. Thank you. So accepted, turn to Todd for your town manager's report.
Sure, thanks Barney. I will mention on the financial report, you will see just two items that I wanted to call to your attention. Are the civic affairs line item and the consulting water management program line item. Although we're just twenty-five percent through the year, you see those have already been spent out effectively. That is a result of household house of waste collection, which costs a substantial amount of money, as well as the cost for July fourth, which is the most expensive event we we hold. And consulting water management program has been highly subscribed since we advertised it as part of a consulting opportunity for those who wish to participate in rain escape rebate supplemental program down offers. So you'll also see that that's already. I think it's I think it's spent out already. Just see.
Looking for the line item here.
We're two hundred and thirteen percent of our budget. So we budgeted five, we budgeted five, and we've already spent out ten thousand six seventy. So you would expect to have supplemental appropriation requests coming your way. If we if we spend out the entire program of civic affairs and community programs. Turning to the man or in addition to, I'll highlight some of the initiatives staffs undertaken over the past month, in addition to assisting with ongoing major projects, including the redevelopment of the former four-H property known as Corso, Chevy Chase, the farm women's market, Parks Development Project, and the Purple Line, all of which will be discussed separately tonight in the council discussion portion of the meeting. Staff has met with MCDOT, the Parks Department and the farm women's market developers EYA to discuss proposed design changes to the Capitol Crescent surface trail as it winds its way along Willow and Forty-seventh. EYA, I put in a request to adjust the garage entrance location, configuration, if you will, further west along Willow. Upon initial review by MCDOT and Parks, they noted some public safety concerns and vehicle movement, turning movement issues, and they brought those to EYA's attention. They are developing, EYA's engineers are developing some alternatives to address the concerns expressed by DOT and Parks, and we should be seeing some alternative design options soon on that front. Staff assisted with.
I did just on that point, and Irene gave me some briefing about it today. I think that's really good work. I mean, I've long been concerned that with the with an entrance and exit on Willow right there, with the Capitol Crescent Trail running right by it. I mean, that's that's clearly, you know, real danger and has to be worked through thoughtfully. So actually, I'm glad that in this case that the county has been proactive in forcing the issue to be taken up early on in the design process. Far better now than finding out, you know, down the road at site plan that suddenly DOT has some other issues. So it's all good. They're trying to take care of this now.
Right. Now, if you look at the design plans closely, the current ones, there's also a proposed proposed street that actually cuts through from Wisconsin to Willow behind the behind the mixed use, proposed mixed use development building. And that will enter or exit onto Willow east of the existing garage entrance. So there's sort of a double issue there with pedestrian safety crossing issues that'll have to be addressed.
Fair enough. But just to be clear, my understanding that they have a very odd Scandinavian term of wow, wow roof or something like that, they call that. And it's only for very occasional, it's necessary as a fire lane primarily, but it's not meant to be normal use. Truck deliveries to the market are underground. And the idea is that that lane, as you're calling it, is really, as I say, for fire vehicle to make, and even taxis aren't really going to use that. So it's meant not, the idea behind it is it's basically part of the public thoroughfare and won't interfere with people using the expanded back end of the part of the farm women's market and going into the park.
All right, I just raised it because it was raised in the meetings and I just thought.
I'm just mentioning as a discussion item, I wouldn't want people us to think that it's a lane of traffic on an ongoing basis.
No. Right. The town has requested some assistance from Delegate Solomon to address the East West Highway crosswalk improvements, given the delay and lack of response from the S H A to our, the town's request to identify safer alternatives to the yellow flashing signal, otherwise known as R R F B, which is currently there. We have not heard back from Delegate Solomon's office, but we'll do the necessary follow-up this week. Staff assisted the five G working group with proposed amendments to the town telecommunications ordinance and development of the ready-made use agreement, which will be discussed this evening. Staff and Irene attended a number of meetings with Pepco officials regarding municipal ownership of streetlights. Without getting into too many details, I, the longest part of it is that it's too expensive for any municipality under the current regime, under the current, under Pepco's current regime to buy and maintain our own streetlights, not only given the costs that Pepco wants to charge and or recover, but as well as ongoing maintenance costs and responsibilities for maintenance that we would have to assume, or any smaller municipality might have to assume. Pepco is going to propose an LED, a full system-wide LED conversion in twenty twenty-three in their next tariff filing. And so if Irene wants to add anything, I just think the long, the takeaway from these meetings is that it's prohibitively expensive under Pepco's current regime, and they're going to do a conversion, a proposal conversion system-wide in twenty twenty-three. And so I think we would recommend that we simply wait for them to do that.
Point taken. And I want to thank both both Irene and you for your your ability to sit through all those sessions.
Sixteen hours we'll never get back in our lives.
Very impressive that you were willing to do that.
And I must say, John Lloyd, our new employee, had sat through a number of a number of those sessions on my behalf. So he was helpful in that respect as well.
Okay, so Irene gets full credit and you get half credit, Todd.
Irene gets full credit, absolutely. She was definitely gets full credit for that. Staff organized and attended and managed fall trash and treasures, which went very well by all accounts. And we're preparing to organize the flu clinic on the eighteenth. We've continued the redesign of the town website. The latest on that is we're going through a design development meeting next week to see what they've come up with after we expressed some displeasure with some initial design ideas they had. And so we're going to regroup and we have the assistance now, some higher-ups in the organization there to to shepherd this through. So we're hoping to see some improvement by next week. And then I do want to mention, although it's not on the manager's report, that we did get a response from the county, the county DOT. They were in today, actually, reviewing the list of inlets that we had reported that were blocked or otherwise in need of repair, based on the survey we had done or had a contractor doing our behalf. As a first step, they're now manually removing any large obstructions they find in the storm sewers. Inlets had that have accumulated lawn debris and and other types of debris are are being identified, and they'll be scheduled for cleaning by the county's vacuum or flusher truck. And then the county has completed a more extensive repair of one inlet on Leland Street that had structural problems that were creating a public safety hazard on the sidewalk. So here again, by all accounts, they've been responsive and we're hoping they'll continue to be, but we'll keep on them to make sure they continue to address the issues we've identified with blockages of our storm drains and needed structural repairs. That concludes the manager's report.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, any other comments from my colleagues before we, okay. So now we have a possibility for residents to have public comments. I see there are two residents' names on the screen. Is that anybody else or just just Lou and Beth? So Lou or Beth, if either of you wish to make any comments at this time. Don't feel obligated, we're just giving you the opportunity.
Thank you, Barney. I don't, and I appreciate the report, financial report and the town manager's report. Very, very supportive information. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right. Beth, did you have anything you wish to say?
Carry on. No, I'm good.
Okay.
Barney, 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 if I may, I can also give you a brief brief update on Zeroman redevelopment. We did hear back from Jason about the second set of plans, stormwater management concept plans that were submitted to DPS. And they came back and they are requiring us to do some infiltration testing where the stormwater management facilities are proposed to be located. Unfortunately, it's a little bit of a unfortunate occurrence, but they have required that to be done to make sure the soils perk. And so although it's gonna, the develop, this development is gonna require an engineer to do some geotech work, it's gonna take about four to five weeks for them to be able to do that, to have availability to do that of the firm that Jason identified. But in the meantime, Jason can continue to work on the construction documents. So all told, it shouldn't delay the project by much time at all. So we're just, we're being required to do these soil perk tests to make sure that where these proposed stormwater management facilities are being located, in fact, the are the appropriate locations based on soil percolation.
Good. Okay, thank you for that. All right, we do not have any variances to hear tonight. So we can move straight to a public hearing on an ordinance to amend the town's public ethics law in response to changes to state law. So in holding a public hearing, I'd like to know if there are any comments from residents regarding this proposed exchanges, which we introduced at our last council meeting. Not hearing any comments, I'll turn it back to my colleagues. Are there any comments on this, on adoption of these changes, which by the way are largely mandated by state laws? We don't really have a lot of discretion. Our council is nodding his head. So on that, I would I would gratefully entertain a motion.
Putting in a motion to update our ordinance, amending to the public ethics law in response to the state law.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, unanimously approved. Glad we get the controversial stuff done first. It's important. Okay, now we move to council discussions. And really just talk through the the first three points. On Corso, we have not heard anything back officially from at all, frankly, from the developers to the letter with the proposed binding elements that we submitted three weeks ago. As a result of not hearing anything, I reached out to Robert Cronenberg today, who while distracted on other matters, which we will be discussing, nonetheless got back and said that he wasn't, that it wasn't, they have not had further conversations, but they do know that the developers have submitted their local map amendment application. However, it has not been accepted yet by the county. To be accepted, it has to be reviewed for completeness. And so it's in that process right now. Once that, once it is complete and labeled as such and accepted, then it's a public document and we can get a copy of that from them. In the meantime, I asked Todd to check with Grant if we can get a copy, and Grant basically responded with the same response, which was it's in process of being accepted, and as soon as it is, we can get it to you. So as Todd and I discussed, probability is that that Grant's probably followed through on what he had said the developers' approach would be, which was they were not, whatever our initial comments were, they were not planning to change the substance of their presentation in regard to the layout or the height or the density, but they might take into account in their narrative some comments on things that we may have highlighted. And obviously, they're basically saying we aren't going to negotiate until we actually get a first round review, including comments back from the planning staff. So in any event, at the moment, there's really not much to report of substance, but that's where it is in process.
I just have a question. Do in, when we talked to Robert on the walkthrough, he, there, after they submit the application, there's actually a clock that starts for, and how much time do we have to comment on their application? After, do you remember how how long it was?
I think it's at least a three-month clock.
Is it long? It was pretty long. I remember it was like.
And 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 that's, that's not a clock that the hearing examiner has to. Ryan, you should speak to this, but that's not a clock that is specifically at ninety days. The hearing examiner can take additional time if if she needs to to do her job. Is that correct, Ron?
Yes, yeah, that's correct. So if we, if we felt like we couldn't get our our comments in in time, we can always let the hearing examiner know they're on the way.
You speak up a bit, Ron. It's a little hard to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I agree with you. And if it appears we don't have enough time or we need more time to submit comments, we can let the hearing examiner know that.
Right. Technically, the planning staff acts as the expert staff on behalf of the hearing examiner. And so the process is coordinated through the hearing examiner, but the substance of the work, reviewing the application, will initially be done by the planning staff.
Oh, I was only going to mention that apparently tonight there was going to be a presentation by Grant to section five about the the Corso development. And I just found out about it today, earlier today, and it was canceled at the last moment. And it's unclear what the problem was, but
Cancelled by Grant.
Grant, by Grant at the last minute. So there was to be a presentation. I was speaking with the town manager about something else, and effectively, they've produced their own letter about the the Corso project that I think we all received a copy of or or.
A copy of a section three letter, was that one that came?
Section, Andy is section five or section three?
Section three.
My apologies. Section three, my apologies. So section three sent a letter, excuse me. And, you know, in general, we appear to all be on the the same page, but it it's more reflective, or what they were going to discuss with Grant this evening was the actual amount of setback from Connecticut Avenue. So to be continued.
Right. Okay. One other point, I guess, Ron, Todd, if you want to speak to this, is we do want to get going with our stormwater management consultant to be really involved in this. I think we, if nothing else, I think we all felt from the work session that stormwater management is a big issue and it's a complicated issue. And we want to make sure that someone whom we trust is at the table from the beginning. So it seems appropriate for us to get that person engaged.
And that seems like an ongoing regardless of what Corso comes back with.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's just, that's just, that's just good due diligence hygiene on our part, no matter what happens.
Right. And and further to that point, I sent an email out this afternoon asking if all of you were in an agreement to retain Jason Azar, who's, you all know, is doing our government park redevelopment budget for us. He does know stormwater at the county level, and he frequently works with Mark Etheridge, who we met with several weeks ago. Jason's duties will be to participate in meetings with DPS and the developers, understand the proposed stormwater plans and calculations, advocate for the town, obviously, as guided by the council, and report back to to the council with his findings and recommendations. Jason will, Jason will work and his work will proceed under the terms of the current contract we have with him. And I sent you the rate sheets today, and I've asked for you to let me know if you agree with the proposal, but by a simple agreement tonight, I can proceed with that if you'd like to do it in one fell swoop.
Yes.
Yes, good, near resolution, just a consensus from the council?
Just a consensus from the council. We have the budget for it. So just a consensus.
Good, I think.
Yes, yes.
Good. Go ahead then. Great, Todd, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else on Corso that you want to ask? Okay. Moving to the farm women's market, Parks Department, Development. The, I was scheduled to testify tomorrow morning at what was meant to be a very happy moment, where in front of the planning board, we would get strong support for two and a half million dollar appropriation of payment, a park impact payment, PIP money. That would be the park department's contribution to the overall funding level. And the paperwork had all been completed. But a, you know, the actions of this afternoon, of the county council stepping in and demanding the resignations of the entire planning board, and an announcement and getting them, an announcement that they want to take a couple of weeks to find three interim members, three, they needed three for a quorum. And all meetings for the next two weeks are are canceled. So that led to a large number of conversations that that I had, not only with Todd, but also with the developers, with Mike Riley, with Cindy Gibson, and back conversation, email conversations with Chris Conklin and Mary Beck, all basically trying to figure out what's the path forward. And as we're all aware, we're all, and I say we, meaning all four partners, developers, county, parks, and we, town. We are all very focused on wanting to get approval of both appropriations, the two and a half million from the parks and the nine and a quarter million from the county, approved by this county council, which goes out at the end of November. And the the obviously, in light of that, a circumstance where the, if the planning board still had to approve the two and a half million, and they're not going to be able to do it till the end of this month, obviously puts in jeopardy the prospect of getting the paperwork to the county council, and they're taking action. One of the details here is that when something is put on the agenda for, or registered at the county council for for review, there is a three-week clock that has to pass. In other words, you can't schedule a public hearing with less than three weeks' notice. And something like this requires a public hearing. So automatically, that builds in a three-week process for the county council at a minimum.
Three succession weeks or three calendar weeks?
I believe it's three calendar weeks, but it's a fair question. I'm not, I'm not certain of that. I do understand that they plan to meet the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. I think that's the twenty-ninth or thirtieth of this month, of next month. But still, this is running a close. So in my conversation with Mike Riley, we explored and how, what called a Plan B was, and is there any way that a path could be found for the packet for the request for the two and a half million to go straight to the county council and not have to be approved by the planning board? They're looking into that. Separately, with Chris Conklin in the county, Mary Beck saying, you know, when will we be able to see your draft packet? Answer sometime next week. They are also keenly aware of the issue arising from the planning board resignation. That is, yes, they will be on top discussions with the county council staff to try to make sure that everything gets flanged up and there's still enough time to get everything done. So the good news is that there's still focus and drive to get this done. But there still has to be a lot of careful thought and Todd's, you know, connected to make it happen. I had a long conversation with Cindy Gibson this evening because I felt this is exactly the kind of role that that Andrew Friedson should be able to play in helping to make sure that the right resources are marshaled to get the schedule set and find a way through this. So anyway, people are aware of it and they're working the traps. But one can't help but have wished that this had all been done a while ago, and therefore this wouldn't even have arisen. But we are where we are. Go ahead, Joel.
Question, I'll avoid making a joke out of the situation on the political side. Although this is the one thing about working with legislative bodies is you never know.
You never know.
That's why it was kudos to you for pushing, 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 trying to get this done, because anything can happen. And wow. State equities. Have you engaged the state delegation? Because the state is an investor in this. They've put money down.
Good point. I know I've not, I've not had conversations with any of you. But I'll reach out. That's a very good thought. I'll reach out tomorrow.
Because they'll make, I mean, frankly, the state's an investor. They, it's a priority. The county listens to the state on matters, and that might raise it in terms of of its level of importance.
Fair enough, good.
I had one question as well, and more, and it's more about the coming, bumping up against the spending deadline that we got because this is ARPA money. And I'm sure there's, I would imagine there are ways in which we could. We need, well, I don't know whether there are ways, but someone needs to be thinking about in the event that the construction gets into that twenty-seven, twenty-eight timeline, and it bumps up against a bill coming in late for us, and then we miss the deadline for spending the ARPA money, that there, somebody needs to be thinking about how we can, what I'll call, forward fund or pay sooner so we don't run up against that ARPA deadline for expenditure in those funds. Because there will be audits of this, and and we need to make sure that we we don't, we've spent them before they're for the deadlines.
It's a very good question. And for. It's a very good question and for the benefit of other people on the call, the, because of the delays in the project, the, it now appears that EYA is feeling that, they're going ahead anyway, by the way, and doing, spending a lot of effort, but, but in all probability, they will not be able to get a site plan submitted until, they're now saying September of 2023. That's not too surprising, I mean, it takes a while to do that work and requires the completion of the whole charrette process, defining the amenities, a lot of work goes into a site plan. McLean would like to get it done faster, great, but that's what they're saying. If they hit that, then it means they get their permits by the back end of 2024 and that's when construction really can begin. So your question is certainly pertinent. And I will say that the council, when we approved the four and a half million, did not specify that it had to come from ARPA money. You were a treasurer at the time, Joy, we did not make that requirement. We always saw that as an option we can make use of to help in our funding, but would stand behind our funding regardless. I think though, that, and one, it doesn't have to be done tonight, the council does have to have a discussion about two aspects, A, maybe three, what level of ARPA money might we wish to put into these projects? And secondly, what policy changes might we have to have to do that? Because right now, our policy isn't directed quite that way. We do know now, because of the change, Sid Ron nodding his head, so I hope he's, he's anticipating what I'm about to say, but we do feel the legal issues have been cleared. It's, we are indeed able to do this, so we have more scope to do this than we did at the time when we took our vote. And the other aspect that has to be flanged with this is exactly your good point, which is, as a practical matter, how much ARPA money can we clearly spend before we run out the clock at the end of 2026? And I will say that there's a fair amount of money that goes out the door right from the beginning for design and other things anyway. And if we decide we want to spend ARPA money, then we can obviously use the ARPA money for those activities. And, and the other thing, which I'll reflect, I'm going to discuss in a few minutes, is a question of how we wish to spend our money vis-à-vis the state money that we're going to be responsible for spending. And, and, and I think there are probably ways again for the ARPA money to be pulled in, you know, closer to the front end. So we have to be mindful of that. And, and I make sure that we do adhere to the law, which requires the money to be spent. Is that, is it my correct, Ron? So we can't just have the money leave us and be parked in someone else's bank account. It actually has to go for the work on the job by the end of 2026.
I'm not sure about that. I had wondered that today as well, whether we could, for example, be under contract and escrow the money and if that would be deemed spent, but I don't know the answer to that. I'll see if Treasury's addressed it.
That's probably something that would be helpful for us to know.
Yeah, and just from knowledge of those, that federal process, the expenditure of those, the spending of it is actually when you make the check disbursement. So if you write the check and they cash it, the federal government think, that means we've spent it. So it, again, it just needs to be worked so that.
So if the money was paid to EYA, but they hadn't paid their subcontractors yet, from our standpoint, we would already have paid the money.
It's been, okay.
But anyway, so it's a, it's a rich stew of issues that we're going to have to take up. I think we want to get appropriations in place and know where our legal documents, but my hunch is that by, frankly, by the end of this year, January of next year, we're going to want to take this up as a council matter and come to a decision for how much of that four and a half million we would like to draw potentially from ARPA money and make sure we flange it. The, the other, the other aspect that I wanted us to review, and Todd, could you put up on the screen, please, the spreadsheet that I sent you this afternoon?
Bear with me, moving all my screens around.
Well, while Todd's doing that, I should say, even let's assume, let's be optimist here for a moment, and we are able to hold to these appropriations being approved in this county council here, you know, in November. Then begins the really detailed work of preparing all of the, all the legal documents. And I, yeah, can you blow it up, please? We don't need, we only need the.
Yep, doing it now.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, great, okay. We, we will have a critical agreement between ourselves and the parks department, a funding agreement, which is basically for our funding that we'll be putting into the parks and what we need to get in exchange in terms of monitoring and oversight. And there'll be also some other agreements will be engaged in. So that legal work has to be kicked off as soon as we get these appropriations and that'll take several months. The, what you see on the screen here, and, okay, yep, that works. The, and all this developed just in the last couple of weeks, I know Todd sent around to everybody, all the information that was coming forth when I was on vacation, but, you know, it wasn't easy to parse through it all and, and I wanted to make sure we spend a little time with it this evening. The, what the county is basically saying is that they, they now have a clear budget for the cost of developing the garage, which you see is 17.15 million plus 400,000 of county project oversight, total cost is 17 and a half million. You also see the cost for the parks, again, counting the oversight, about 2.8 million for the park on lot 10 and close to 6 million for the cost of the park on lot 24, for a total of 8.7 million. And then there's also another component, which has been in the project from the beginning, which is undergrounding the utility wires in the vicinity. And this has always been seen as desirable. In the master plan for Bethesda, the county insisted that in the redevelopment of the farm women's market plaza itself, that the utility wires be buried. And EYA said it would be great if we can extend the burying to include the park, because that gives us more flexibility in where we can put amenities. Aesthetically, it's much more pleasing and it just makes for a better environment. So that component has been in there and it has generally been attributed to being part of the surface improvements, if you will, and therefore part of the civic green. But in the, in the last version that just came through in the last week, there was an agreement between parks and garage to split the responsibility for the, for the utilities in two pieces, 50% associated arbitrarily to the garage and 50% to the parks, but the total is still the same, 1.4 million. What falls out of this in terms of, that's, those are the expenses, basically 8.7 million for the parks, a total of 1.4 million for undergrounding the utilities, and a total of 17 and a half million for the garage, and that gets you to a total project cost of 27.7 million. In the funding sources, what has been, there's been a lot of work that mostly has arisen from the DOT, that is trying to basically set up bilateral contracts where only two parties have to take care of financing or paying for a particular item. And so what the county has said, look, we're going to put all of our money against the garage and add in the money we're getting from the developers, and that almost pays for the entire garage. We're short 352,000. So we're going to ask the town to support us to the tune of 352,000 to meet the cost of building the garage. That basically means that the cost of the civic green falls to the parks department and to the town. Now, the parks department is putting in directly two and a half million, that has to go to parks, and they are also receiving another two and a half million from the state in a, in an earmark appropriations bill that was passed this past March. And, and it's in a part of the bill which talks about it being used for parks and playgrounds. So they take the view that that, all that money should go to parks as well. So that means of the total amount for parks, of that 8.7 million, 5 million will be coming from the parks department, either through their direct contribution plus the channeling of the two and a half million they're getting from the state. So essentially, the town takes care of the rest. How do we do that? Well, we also have two different means. We have our own direct contribution, four and a half million, and we also are receiving $1 million of money that's from the state that's being channeled through us. The language pertaining to the part of the appropriation bill, which carries our million, is somewhat different than the language for the parks department. And in the language that is associated with us, the money is more, how, their money is, it can be more broadly used, and specifically it says that it can be used for site improvements. And I think that gives us more flexibility and potentially, as I'm suggesting in this version, we could direct some state money to the undergrounding of the utilities as a site improvement. Why, before I go further, Ron, I should stop and make sure that I hear from you if you have any questions or if you're okay with this interpretation.
Well, yeah, I think that is a fair interpretation. I would certainly consider undergrounding utilities to be site improvements.
Okay.
As you've noted, it allows more flexibility in locating amenities and beautifies the park, which is, you know, essential to the town.
But if I can ask a question, I mean, we're, we can clearly spend our funds on site improvements, but we're not required to. Who is actually required to? The county requesting that it be done that way, are they requiring any specific partner of this project or is it just a general? But can you, can you peel that back a little bit more? When the county insisted on it, what did that look like?
The county has not, they've not insisted on anything, actually. They, they have simply said, we would like to take over the responsibility for paying for the garage. So they're basically taking their chips and saying, we'll, we'll take care of the garage. And you can see there, the nine and a quarter million dollars under the county options, you know, the various funding channels, is all put under the garage. And then they also will be taking the payment that the developers are making for the density for the new building on lot 24, that's 7 million. And the developers are adding another, rounded up to a million dollars that they will put in. So that is what those sources, those two parties are going to pay for almost the entire amount of garage. They're short 352,000. And so they're asking the town to contribute 352,000 to the garage. Otherwise, the county and the developer are paying for that. Because their money is all in that category, it's not available, obviously, to help fund the parks, so the parks responsibility falls back to the parks department and the town. And frankly, I think this is something which Irene and I've had some discussions about. The, in going over this project with residents and discussions over the several years, we've been careful to say that all of this has to be done to get the parks and that we've not said that all of our money must go just for parks, it's all important. And I, in fact, had several conversations with residents who have said, wow, yeah, but, you know, I'd really feel better if our money could really go for parks. And I said, well, it depends upon how everything falls out here. We can't, ahead of time, stipulate that because there are other requirements for funding from other parties that also have to be accommodated. And at the end of the day, you know, building the garage is just as important as the parks. You don't get the parks if you don't build the garage. What is falling out in this, and this is the proposal that, in the numbers there, are what we're getting from the county and then the, what I have highlighted is just.
I'm still vague on the utilities question.
Okay, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I don't understand why there's a requirement for utilities to be undergrounded.
Oh, oh, okay, I hadn't understood it that way, I'm sorry, I hadn't understood that. The, it is a desirable feature, I don't, I'm not, it's not clear to me that it is absolutely obligated. I think there may be parts that are, in order for them to build the garage and get out to the edge of the, of the, of where they're going to be building to, particularly on the section of Willow that extends up to 46th Street. I think in that section, they probably want to, they want to go very close to the property line, they may, they may have to do something to the utilities, they can't just leave the poles there. I'm not as certain that it is required along Willow.
I mean, yeah, I think just to fill out my thought on this is that, you know, we don't do utilities, right? And, but.
We're not taking on the responsibility.
I'm totally comfortable with the fungibility of the money for the parks and, and the garage, but somebody has to implement utilities and somebody benefits from that. And if there are funds coming from the town that are, are going to this project, I don't want to, I'm uncomfortable with the idea that we're subsidizing utility undergrounding that a developer may benefit from or they want, because it's in their interest. If there's a gap, that shortfall should not be covered by us for utility undergrounding. And I just, I can hear the sort of like, oh, we need to put a few more hundred thousand dollars incoming, and that makes me very uncomfortable if that could otherwise be taken from utilities and being undergrounded. I love utilities being undergrounded, trust me. I would love it if there were no utilities at all in the town and in DC they were undergrounded and it was, it was pleasant. But that's sort of an obligation of a party that does this work, that's very clear, and I'm not sure we should be subsidizing that.
Well, okay, I, I, I don't, I guess I don't feel, let me hear out other comments first.
Yeah, I'm, first of all, I think if it's along Willow, some of those lines come into the town. So undergrounding utilities is a good thing. The more you get them underground, the less problems we got. So I, I'm not concerned about us contributing, especially if it's lines coming into the town. The, the 342,000 going to the garage, we could use the state money for that part of it, right?
It's a good question. Ron, I'd have to ask Ron what his thoughts are about that, whether we could use the state money for our contribution to the garage.
Because I, I tell you what, I, I think, as I've listened to the town residents over the years about this, is that they really want the parks. And so I, just for the visibility of what we're really supporting, we, we need to see if we can keep it focused on the parks. But since it's the state money coming into us, I wouldn't have any problem with some of the state money being used for the garages. So it's just a thought, if we could, just to rejigger the spreadsheet a little bit so that that money comes from the.
I mean, if I, I completely agree with you. My big concern is initially it was four, now it's 4.5, I want it to be now, well, 4.82. And that, you know, now here's a little more something that we should cover because the other parties that are obligated to do this work don't have the money. That's what's in the back of my mind. So I'm totally, in an ideal world, undergrounding the utilities, the park, money's fungible, absolutely. It gets me a little queasy to think that we have to find the 300, 400,000 more and the gap sort of grows because of the undergrounding that another party really should be obligated to pay for.
Well, I may make sure I'm clear on your point, okay? I want to make a careful distinction. The, first of all, we're not taking responsibility for the undergrounding. The undergrounding utilities will be done by the developer. And, and again, Irene has had some discussion about this. The, the, we are not, whatever is the allocation of money that we put into any of the aspects of this, we will be, have to make clear that we are not obligated in any way proportionally to be responsible for any cost overruns that arise from that item. That's, that's what, I mean, that has to be, otherwise we can't do the project. So the, if another, put it differently, if, we could just as easily, from the point of view of spending our money theoretically, said, fine, everyone puts in a pro rata share and, you know, we pay for, you know, whatever our share, our, our four and a half million out of 27.7, call that 15, 20%, we'll pay for 20% of everything, right? We, you know, it could have been done that way in principle, but, but the county has proposed that they would, they would divvy it up this way. I felt, when listening to this, that. I felt when listening to this, that this meant that most of our money goes to parks, three point, the way I've done it here, 3.2 out of 4.5 million. But, but that it didn't, it wasn't 100% for parks because at the end of the day, the whole project has to be paid for. And, and there's not enough money to move around without our helping out on these other areas. But I think it is, if, if, if it is absolutely vital, I don't, I think there's no, there's no difference in our views on this point, that if we was, if we were to say, okay, you know, we're prepared to put in, you know, this kind of money of $900,000 for the utilities and use some of our state money as well, that that does not mean that we're on the hook for any of the cost overruns associated with utilities.
Then, then can you just maybe go into that point a little bit more? The gap that you've identified here, are you calling that cost overruns?
No.
Okay. So that's my, my point, right? Like, which is, I'm looking at 4.5 after 4.0, and I'm saying, I think that's our, that's our target. And if, if there's this additional expense, it's not a cost overrun, it's just an additional expense and we should have it paid for. We should, we should, we should stick to the 4.5.
Right, we are at 4.5.
As long as we're at that, and if there's a gap and they don't come to us to look at as the piggy bank, I'm all, I'm totally fine.
Okay, no, we are total right there is 4.5.
Good.
Okay.
Then I didn't understand.
Okay. And that 4.5 is divvied up as looking just at our, not counting the million from the state, which is our money.
Yeah.
That's currently divvied up as 3.2 million to parks, quad parks.
That's great.
932,000 with the undergrounding utilities and $352,000 for the contribution of the garage. That totals 4.5.
Okay, then I didn't get that.
I'm assuming those numbers include contingency.
They include some contingencies. But I think, and I want to be very clear about this, too. I mean, Joel's brought this up and it's an important point. I, I don't think any of us who've been involved in these discussions believe that those contingencies are going to handle the impact of the inflation that we're seeing in the economy. And so there's, you know, what's, what's going on right now is a process to get the appropriation from the county so the project can be funded and get going. But until they, like with any project, they go out and actually get the firm bids, they actually run the charrette process, we actually know the cost of the amenities, there's going to be uncertainty. And I will, you know, be quite candid, there's probably going to be additional money required. And will they come back to the town and ask for something?
Yeah, as long as everybody else.
As long as everyone else does it.
No, I'm cool.
What I, what I'm not, I, what I, I, I feel, more than that, I'm just speculating and I don't want to do that.
You're right.
But I'm being honest, I want to be clear that, that there's a good chance there will be some cost overruns that are, will soak up those contingencies plus. And, and then we're going to be looking for contributions. There could be more state money, more money from the county. There's also the prospect of, of getting contributions to the Parks Foundation. There is someone who's already spoken to me and to the county about putting in some serious money to, for naming rights for one of the amenities in the park. So there are going to be things that we're going to look at to cover the gap. You know, and that's going to be a discussion we're going to have to have.
So, so, yeah, I, I also have expressed some concerns in having our town funds directed in this way. I understand the limitations of the other parties. However, there, having lost 16 hours of my life in terms of listening to these Pepco meetings, it's absolutely extraordinary how quickly money adds up there when you're dealing with just one pole versus, I don't know how many, maybe there's 10 or 12 that we're, we're thinking of here. So I, what I was expressing to Barney earlier was unlike when you're going through a discussion, a charrette process about park amenities, there is a control factor. You can actually legitimately say, look, we only have X amount of money for amenities. Here's your à la carte set of items. Let's all work together to figure out what's going to work. You can't do that with utility. You can't say, oh, this is going to be, it just is not going to happen. And while, you know, over time, there's been discussions about, say, the other end of Elm Street Park where the Capitol Crescent Surface Trail is going through, we, as a town, have repeatedly asked, let's ground those poles, right? The county says, not going to do it, don't have the money, can't do it. So I understand that the original request was made by the developers in, under the auspices of, you know, it'll create more space, more available space for amenities. But the truth is, they're going to really reap the reward out of it. So are we in terms of aesthetics.
For the park, yeah.
But they're going to reap the reward. And what I don't appreciate is having just town monies dedicated towards this. So yes, it's great, it would be done. Rich, I loved your idea about maybe the ARPA funds can be versus what the town's money is going to be. I, I appreciate that idea. I appreciate that, that undergrounding, I'm sorry, underground wires is, it's much, much more pleasant experience for all, but I'm very concerned that this will be the first thing that is going to go at least double, just for no other reason than labor costs and whatever sort of issues that, you know, unknown things that come up.
So you're suggesting drop that.
I don't, I'm just expressing my opinion here that I feel that as if we're kind of taking on that responsibility. I don't necessarily see from this chart that there is that true relationship with the county that, I mean, we can say we're going to hold a, a strong line, no one, no more pennies dedicated towards utility undergrounding, but I don't necessarily see a partner here that is going to come to the, i.e. the county, that's going to come to the table should, when there will be overages, knowing that we've, in other parts and other discussions about other projects, hey, let's underground this. And the immediate response has been, no, that we don't have any money for it.
Well, let me offer a couple of thoughts. Good discussion. The, the, first of all, I just, it has occurred to me that there could be some element of control because it's a continuum, right? In other words, we could say, look, we clearly see how undergrounding the poles along Willow makes a lot of sense. Let's explore how much of the undergrounding we, you know, tell us, tell us whether that budget is enough for undergrounding the wires all along 46th Street or not. And if not, then maybe you don't underground all those wires. You know, you want a ground apartment, I don't know. But I mean, the point is you might be able to, in fact, put in an element of control in that. The other thought, though, this, this, I think we have to remember all this. First of all, this is simply a spreadsheet of numbers, so that the conditionality is not in any of this. But nothing, we make no commitments, and we've made this clear in our resolutions, and it was written for a reason in this way, that we are, there's nothing binding on the town until we have seen and approved all legal documents. Also, our commitments are all preliminary. So if, if, if we were, if we find ourselves in negotiating documents where our position is, we're putting in, you know, we plus the money we're responsible for from the state are putting in 1.4 million for utilities, and that's all we're putting in. And if anybody else says, oh, no, you're responsible for all the cost overruns, well, we don't sign the document. So the, to me, the, this allocation is a, basically something that the county has come up with, but it, we have to make absolutely clear in, in our agreements that this does not mean that this represents a prorated responsibility for any cost overruns of a particular item that we're paying for. And, and I think that's part of the concern that I'm hearing here, that, that you're fearing that, that the cost overruns with bearing utilities could be extra large, extra concern, and we would be tagged with that number. And the answer is, we simply cannot permit that to happen and we work through the documents.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that if you were to take a poll of town residents at 1.4 million, if that could be moved to park to make a better park and the utilities aren't put underneath, but we have 1.4 million in better park at a fixed level as opposed to a variable one, people might prefer that. So I guess I, I'm looking at must haves versus, you know, want to haves. And like, in the hierarchy, we've got, we've got to have the garage, we've got to have the park, and then there's the utilities, which comes in third. And I'm totally for conceptually utilities, but I have a lot of trepidation about what it looks like in terms of potential cost overruns and trade offs. So to Irene's point, I mean, she said it better than I, than I did by far. And that's sort of what I was thinking, which is, well, wait a minute, the developers are the ones that are going to get the benefit out of it. I mean, the park is not going to be better or worse because utilities underneath, it's going to be the development and it's going to be that area. And that's great, makes it more commercially attractive. Then if that's the case, then they should be more obligated to ensure that any like expenses that go up, that's all on them, right? Like, if they really want it, then that should be them. That's sort of like my instinct, not saying it's a decision, but that's my instinct on this. You know, put a little pressure on, on it, of course, obviously, but I, I don't know. I mean, a million bucks more for a better park versus undergrounding utilities, I'd prefer the park.
I have a question. Is this, if there were a, a, a parks god, we would write a single check, right? But there is no parks god. We are writing, I mean, basically, in his case, are we talking about writing three checks? We got to write a checks to parks, we got to write a check to the developer, and we got to write a check to the county, right? That's really what it's about.
Right.
Okay. So if otherwise, we were writing a $4.5 million check to the parks god, if there were one, that would be the end of that. And the parks god would decide how the money gets spent because there is a budget for, you know, when we go through the charrette process on the parks, it is what it is. And I just think that, you know, I think it's, I just don't know how much, I mean, I guess from, from an optics point of view, doesn't really look that great that we're paying to put utilities underground. But to be quite honest with you, utilities need to be underground, given the storms and all the other crap that we have going on. It is wonderful that the developer is trying to do this because maybe we can encourage more of that undergrounding of, probably not, but it would be great to encourage that more. I guess I, you know, I think we, we want those parks there. The alternative to not spending four and a half million is to have really big buildings in front of those residents who live at 46th. That would really suck. So I think I, I really don't care at the end of the day how the money is spent. I want those parks there. I don't want those res, I mean, I could very well be living there, who knows? People move. I wouldn't want to have some big building right in front of me, which we know would, would have, would have happened had we not really fought to get those parks there.
Thank you for those comments. I think the, at this point, from my knowledge of the negotiations, there's no prospect of getting additional money from the developers. They were, they're raised from seven to eight million, seven million being what they had to pay in terms of density. I, we were not involved in the negotiations of that. I'm not saying that that was a great result, I'm not. But this is where they are. What is available is to move the money around. So if there was more comfort on the part of the council to shift some of our money out of utilities and into paying for the garage, we could do that. I don't know if that helps anything. I don't think there's much room to put more money into the parks without pushing the, the parks money out of the parks. And, and that's where they're stuck because that's what they do. They, they put money into parks. Now, I can, I will offer, I guess I can, I, I know the language for their state money is, is, as I said, somewhat more tightly written than for us. Having said that, I can certainly, I'm happy to ask the question to see if there's a way that they could contribute some of their state money to also going into the utilities. That would allow us to move more of our money out of utilities and into parks. But these are all adjustments, they're not, you know, they're some hundreds of thousands of dollars. I, I, I think where I, there's, clearly there's common ground among all of us is that whatever, wherever we spend money, whatever percentage, does not mean that we're signing on to commitments for, for paying for cost overruns. That's absolutely the case. I'm happy, and I think there'd be common ground on this, but that, that if it looks like the utilities budget is woefully underfunded and, and others are not willing to cough up money, then we talk about taking it off the table or reducing the amount of undergrounding, even if we'd otherwise prefer it. But I don't see realistically that we can just say, we don't want to spend money on, on utilities without, and we want to put more money into parks without getting parks themselves to put more money into the utilities, and they may feel they can't. So the, the money has to be swapped around somewhere. At the end of the day, you know, it's, it's a, all of these are desirable and really make the project what it will be. And, and I, you know, it's, it's a, I guess one other comment I make, and it's, it's, when it comes to park amenities, I think you make a fair point, Joel, that, you know, some people would say, boy, I'd prefer another amenity rather than burying an underground wire, putting wires on the ground. But on the other hand, we have to make sure that we're doing things upfront that are no regrets actions. In other words, if we don't put in an amenity upfront, it doesn't mean that you can't do it later on. Usually you can, you can go back in and put in another playground or something else. But if you don't bury the utility wires upfront, I don't know if you ever have a chance to go back and do that. So just another consideration that in terms of where we put it in our priorities.
Maybe there's a way to get more clarity then on utility expenses and really expected expenses. Cause to me, it, it is a bit of a, bit of a, an X factor here, right? And so I think if we can get that, I mean, again, I, I'm personally totally comfortable with moving money around within that 4.5 million cap. But I, I go into the discussion, I get nervous about 1.432 going to utilities where maybe it'll become 2.2. And all of a sudden, you're looking at, where's the other 750 coming from? And it's, and if the developers are maxed out, who's paying for that? And now we're obligated because there's utility undergrounding. But I think if we could get a little more granularity on that, and that's asking a lot, but I, I think that would be helpful. Yes, I would like to have a higher ceiling for the park, though, if possible. I don't know why a park is that price. I guess the county says so, but.
Well, think about how much we're spending for Zimmerman Park, and that's a spit of a land compared to this.
Right, yeah. Well, I mean, I don't know if that's the right number or not. Just personally, I mean, that's the number we got, but could it be another million?
Those, yeah, those, those numbers came from EYA, not from the county.
EYA.
And they are now in the process, they've just hired their place, place designer experts, cityscape, I think it's cityscape. So, no, playscape, I think it's called, that are sort of looking at the concept. And then they separately have hired a landscape architect or, you know, parks architect to do that. So all those numbers are going to be worked through. And as I say, I anticipate they will probably go up some. At the moment, the focus has been get the appropriation from the county so we can actually get going. That's what.
And just to be clear, my issue is that our TOCC name and funding is the only thing sourcing the utilities. And that's why I am.
It raises the question.
I'm really, yeah, I, I am, not that I would expect that that means we own it, you know, you bought it, you own it kind of, or you break it, break it.
But there are utilities outside of our town boundaries, too.
There are utilities outside our town boundaries, but if, because our, whatever these documents are going to look like at the end.
There are utilities outside our town boundaries, but if because our, whatever these documents are going to look like at the end, we're the only ones that had anything next to utilities.
So we're paying for utilities of Bethesda, basically.
Well.
I mean, that's essentially.
That could be used. I'm I'm just totally expecting that there will be overages. And since no one else put in $1 towards it, for whatever reason, then they're going to just easily come back to the town.
I I I.
The county's not going to, they're going to come up with a million excuses why they can't fund anything to do with utilities.
If in our legal agreement with developer, developer has the responsibility for undergrounding utilities. We make a commitment between ourselves and the with the money we get from the state to put 1.4 million against that, period. They have no way to come back to us and say, we demand that you pay more. They can't do that.
No, but I would suggest at that point, the total responsibility is theirs then. I mean, it's it 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 is theirs.
It is theirs. And that probably forces them to do the work.
That's right.
Yeah, they would have to complete, they would have to.
Focus to them.
Sorry. Yeah. No, they would have to complete it.
To make them, make them the obligated partner.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
I find it, yeah, I I I just from a political perspective, I'm not saying we change it, but Irene's bringing up something that gets me a little nervous. Hear me muttering under my breath like, oh, oh, TOCC is paying a million and a half for utilities that are outside of our boundaries. The it's just it's a harder sell than we're paying for a park that everyone gets to use.
Would it be easier for us to ask to to take others, take on a partner for the utilities and and put more of our money in the garage?
I I I think it's, this is just one person talking, but I I think it's a more plausible argument because Tamret, it it's just not a great argument. But it's a more plausible one. The undergrounding utilities that are within literally the boundaries of Bethesda, Montgomery County governance. I mean, those are hard utilities, right? Like it's not a common, um, you know, common uh, asset in the same way. It's utilities that residents of Bethesda will be using every day and just them. And so it's different from the park and the garage that our people will be continually accessing and using directly. Maybe I'm overthinking it, but who knows, you know, if some, if we can move the money money around that way, I think I think it's an easier.
Another optic, we basically say we we combine the utilities cost in total with the garage as one combined element. And we're putting in a certain amount of money against that.
There's that. That's that's kosher.
True that. Would that be something that would be preferable?
Something a little.
At least you have partners where that's what, if those two columns are combined.
Maybe our residents would become, would realize, okay, you know, all this and and the points that.
Yeah, that's good. Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, I I from the when the public hearing or discussions and charrettes and go on, the less items staring at them to be critical of the better. And if it's staring at them that we're paying for all these undergrounding utilities in Bethesda, that is like staring for somebody to be upset about.
Should I ask about that?
Okay. It's good. It's really good. Thank you for the spreadsheet, by the way.
I I really, I mean, I really, I think Joy hit the nail on the head, you know, if we we want to commit.
We want to get this right.
Right. We want to commit.
We have a $27.7 million project.
Pretend like it's going to God, right? So it is going. So how you do, how you rejigger this stuff from that point on is perception to the of what the resident. So we we need to make the perception as more benefiting the town as much benefiting the town as we can.
Very right. So my takeaway would be to say, look, of our four and a half million dollars, wait. By the way, originally in this table, I'm saying my my change here. You see the numbers that I folded, the the county has suggested half a million for from of our grant money from the state. We've got a lot 10, half a million for a lot 24 and showed us as putting in all, you know, both halves of the garage, pardon me, of the of the underground costs, both 50% associated with utilities and 50% associated with the garage. So so we had a the finding out however that we can use state money for the for the utilities. I'm suggesting this modified version, which has the effect of taking more of our four and a half million and pushing it into the parks. So in this particular version of the spreadsheet, 3.2 million is just over 70% of our four to four and a half million. So it's saying in the in this allocation, 70% of our money is going to parks, 30% for the other necessary infrastructure associated with this project. I would like to think that's an acceptable formulation of it. But if it helps to merge the different, you know, the utilities with the garage and and say, look, all this is also necessary and important for the project. We can look into doing that and expressing it that way. But I I, anyway, so I'll have those discussions.
Also, it's still us. It's still town. Like you could merge the two columns, but it's still us providing the 1.4.
No, if we merge the columns, we would be saying we're putting in then we would say essentially our our 1.4, 1.7 million is going for utilities and garage in any way you guys want us divvy it up. It doesn't matter to us.
You've just moved the E column into the B C D or or added to the the D.
Right, added to A, G and H would be added up. A, G and H would be added up. So it's.
Yeah, the garage would rise a little and the parks rise a little bit and everyone.
And and we would say, okay, right. And so we're saying we're not, we're not saying that our money is earmarked to utilities. Our money is going. This sum of money is available for the combination of utilities in the garage.
Right.
And on. Exactly.
So so that change and then the the request slash demand that all overruns related to that you to uh, undergrounding utilities be the cost be borne by.
Or even the garage.
I think that's something we need to seek, I would think.
Well, we'd like to get, we we got, yeah, I I think we have to get the updated numbers, but I think if there are cost overruns on anything, it's going to be we're going to make a group conversation about how it's covered and those cost overruns could arise in any one of those items. We don't know how much it's going to show up. I had initially thought one of the values of showing us is having very little contribution in the garage is give us a chance to try to get out from any requests to help support cost overruns in the garage. Cause that's actually the item I'm most concerned about. But I think you made a point, Joel, which is people have a probably easier understanding under with the idea of of importance of the garage.
See, I'm I'm a little more optimistic about this than I think some of my colleagues. Because I think once you get to the point, uh, you know, we've gone through all the paperwork, we've made the agreements. Once you get to the point of constructing this thing, the people who have the vested ownership of that asset are the ones that are going to have to figure out how to pay for. And we don't have a vested interest in any of that thing. Other, I mean, we're not even going to be a party to the parks. You know, we're not, we're not on on the line for paying for anything after that. It's the owner, it's the the owners of those assets. So, you know, those condominiums that are developed are the ones that are responsible for those costs.
But you bring up an interesting point, which would be the the reverse is I don't want them to be thinking about taking money out of the parks to pay for undergrounding utilities because they ran out of money.
But that that's part of the funding agreement and we would show our contribution going to the parks. That that's separate from the ownership and the responsibility once those titles have been vested in those people to and those titles, I'm, I I assume will be done before construction absolutely starts. The condominium for the garages will be signed, condominium for the parks will be signed. And uh, the contracts for the EYA to do their things are all going to be signed. So at that point, it becomes not our problem. It's the condominium's problem.
Right. Okay, I think I have a sense of where we all are. Um, and I just quickly summarize it. That the um, we all see the major components here. Um, they um, we all have to make clear that that we are that whatever, whatever is our involvement with any particular activity does not represent a commitment for any cost overruns in proportion to that. That for the purposes of our discussion, we're more comfortable. We understand how all, you know, different people have to take different responsibilities. But from our standpoint, we're more comfortable with saying that um, we would be with the numbers that we're responsible for, including the million dollars that'll be channeled through us. But what is not associated with parks simply be associated as a general wide item for us in the sum of the other costs that are required for this project, including both the utilities in the garage and expressed as a percentage of that. Uh, but we are not looking to see a precise allocation of our money across utilities distinct from the garage. My hope I'm phrasing that properly. Uh, and I will convey that. Okay. That's good. Moving along. Long discussion, but good one. I'm glad we went through that. We've never been able to have a discussion like this before because we've never been this far along before. So let's look at the bright side.
By the way, the leveraging is great and it's a number you should use in six to one, right? I mean, it's a six to one leveraging for our money, 27 million.
Oh, and I actually, the leverage is even better than that, Joel, because this does not include the $12 million the developer is spending for the redevelopment of the farm women's market plaza itself.
So we're at 40 million.
We're a $40 million project in total and we're putting in four and a half million. So 10 to one.
Nine or 10 to one. Right, yeah.
And we also know where that money really came from. Okay. The um, moving right along on the purple line. The um, we wanted to go and have it, Irene and I want to discuss. Irene, do you want to take this?
No, that's.
Okay, all right. I didn't mean to monopolize in the conversation. That wasn't this just came up, but um, we have been informed by the um, by the MTA, by Matt Pollack and his group that uh, they certainly are abiding by the commitment to put in the additional two feet of noise wall that we've signed change order for, and that's kind of happening. But they are not comfortable with maintaining the current statement that we received in a letter now three years ago stating that um, in respect to the noise device that will go at the entrance to the portal, that they will put in a switch with such that only when workers are on the tracks will that noise device be be triggered. And otherwise it will be silent. That was the commitment that we received three years ago, arising from great help from Jared Solomon and others. And the current MTA group is saying, well, actually, the the former MTA officials did not follow the right protocol. They did not go through the right channels and they did not leave, that's not the right word, they didn't follow the protocol and they did not leave a written record of what they had done to demonstrate that that would be a viable alternative. And therefore, the current government, the current group is not comfortable maintaining that commitment to us at this time. They have said they are going to study it. They need to look at it. They understand our points. And, you know, they're making body language like we should be able to get there, but we need to review this carefully. We said, they said, we met them in the summertime. They said, give us some months, we'll work on it. We said, okay, we'll give you some months. We've bugged them recently. They've come back and said, we have nothing further to report. They said it in three flowery paragraphs, but essentially came to that.
That's.
So we said, we're now going public and discussing it. I had a phone call earlier today with one resident who's most affected because I wanted to make sure he knew of this in advance.
Jim.
Uh, but we wanted to make sure that we discussed it as a council and it's on the public record. The um, uh, what um, you know, the next step for us is probably to engage our state delegation and to go through a process like we had before to basically force them to work this through. And just to give a sense, it's the same old, same old frustration. Just to give you one simple example. The argument is always used that this device is necessary for the safety of the workers. Okay, begs the question, trains coming every seven minutes. How often are workers going to be jumping off off track while the train is running? Probably not happening. But secondly, if you're really worried about the safety of the workers, why is the noise device on the outside of the portal blasting down the tracks instead of in the middle of the tunnel? No one in this meeting, what, seven or eight people in the room? No one in the meeting had a clue. It's like they had never thought about that. So, you know, we're just not.
Like back to the beginning.
It's 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 just ridiculous.
Yeah, there's an application of standards that were established nationally. Um, but they don't necessarily fit into this particular equation where you have a tunnel so close to residential homes uh, and neighborhoods. So there are other projects, obviously, around the world, they keep around the country. They talk about a project in Baltimore, a light rail type of thing, but they don't go into a tunnel. So this, what we also asked for was best practices, right? That the similar situation to this. Of course, no one is looking to create an unsafe situation, but the the idea of thinking outside the box so that you still achieve the level of safety that's necessary, but then the level of actual comfort for the residents that are nearby. Um, and then the uh, there's um, nursery schools, there, you know, preschools, there, there's all sorts of stuff going on. So it's been two and a half months, but we have not been getting any sort of resolution yet, but we're understanding that a resolution is coming at some point.
So our job is to put additional pressure on them and make sure it's resolved. So.
Well, did anybody ask about the, I don't know, is is Metro considered light rail or is that heavy rail? Okay, well, what happens? You know that part of Metro where it it's coming out of, is that White Flint?
They do not have these horns. Metro does not have these horns.
So why do we need these horns here?
Because this is the Maryland Transit Authority. This is not the Washington Metro system.
And so whatever Washington Metro system, that's not a best practice, a system that has been working pretty decently since 1973?
But it doesn't operate street level, like Metro doesn't really operate street level.
That's street level. The where, you know, we're at White Flint, it comes out of the ground.
Right.
And it goes to, so it comes from under Wisconsin and then that's the part of the red line that's above ground.
Right, but there's barriers and stuff. I I don't necessarily see that they're going, because there's a bike trail running right next to it.
Bike trail goes goes near there. Now, it's not like you could like jump in it from the bike trail, but the bike trail that, you know, that goes through Rock Creek Park does partially, you know, it's not going to be as close as it is, but where the metro comes out of the ground from Wisconsin and goes to the White Flint Station. There's a lot going on there. I'm just saying that, you know, I mean, not saying that you're not right and that these people aren't
Do we not have any?
Being bullheaded, but.
Yeah, we have, we have, yes, we have very clear email record in terms of our requests, but we do not have. I'm sorry, first of, so I I think generally these are MTA requirements and that's that's not the metro. So it's your 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 question's a great question, by the way. Don't get me wrong, but I'm and I'm just, I'm just parroting back what we've been told when we've raised this issue, which is where we're where we have to comply with Maryland State Transit Authority requirements. And the the uh, the email record is that um, is a strong one between the town and the MTA on the subject. But we do not have any email, we don't have anything of what was the internal work done which they claim to have done to validate the old regime's validation of of this alternative approach. So that's what has not been found according to the new team and they don't therefore don't have any record. They don't, they admit that they sent the letter. Okay, so that's not the question. They're not quarreling with the fact they made that the old regime made a commitment. There's no quarrel about that. What they're saying is that that. What they're saying is that that old regime didn't do it right. Because they we have no record of what analysis they did to justify the
I hear a court case, Ron Bold.
What do you think, Ron? Sounds solid to you?
Time for us to sue.
But Todd, you can take the screen, the spreadsheet off the screen. Thank you.
I mean, it really is not, it's a matter of us, what justification was, they made a commitment.
Well, I'll have to assess whether it's a binding legally enforceable commitment.
Yeah. Okay.
Same old purple line.
Yeah. Let us move on to telecom. And Irene, I understand you're going to ask Ron to lead us through this discussion. Is that intent? Or do you want to say anything at the outset?
Yes, Ron, thanks to the to Ron, to Todd, to the 5G working group. That's kind of a subcommittee to the Public Services Committee. There's been a lot of great work done to understand what is coming down the pike with respect to potential small cell infrastructure deployments. There is an effort across the country to be able to introduce this type of 5G ability into residential neighborhoods. And what we want to do is make sure, what we wanted to do, excuse me, was to take a look at our ordinance as well as our right of way agreement and see what can be done to make sure it's at its strongest to protect, you know, given, given the limited authority that we have. So Ron is going to present a combination of recommendations that have been provided by our FCC legal counsel along in working together in partnership with Ron and some recommendations that have also been provided by the 5G working group. And the hope tonight is that we can go through these different recommendations. And then hopefully at the end, come up with the the exact changes so that we could introduce the legislation this evening so that we can have the public hearing next month, if everyone is in agreement. The reason for this accelerated timeline, if you will, is because the county council, according to current schedule, which we know could change in a moment, but current schedule is that the the full full council is going to review the ZTA having to do with 5G infrastructure, but in the sense of decreasing a setback from what is now sixty feet to thirty feet, which which allows for more homes in the town to then become eligible, if you will, for carriers to install 5G or cell, small cell infrastructure. The that is supposed to be voted on October twenty fifth, and the way ZTA's work is that they become, if it's passed, they become effective ten days later. So we're in a situation where I'm not sure if Verizon and the like will want to immediately put in their applications, but we want to be ready. So that's where we're at. Ron, take it away.
All right, thank you. And just to add to that for some additional background, I know the council members are all aware of this, but for those attending the meeting that might not be aware, some additional history might be useful. The FCC issued an order in twenty eighteen basically preventing local governments from getting in the way of small cell deployment. And the FCC order provided that local governments that did want to adopt standards had to do so within certain parameters and had to do so in writing in advance for them to be enforceable. So the town acted quickly to get an ordinance on the books. We knew we'd revisit it one day. We wanted to wait and see what happened at the federal state and even the county levels, because that FCC order did result in litigation. And it wasn't yet clear whether the state may preempt us because the industry was requesting that the state adopt legislation to prohibit us from adopting local regulations. And as Irene noted, you know, the county's finally gotten around to addressing their rules. So the town's PSC committee took a look at our ordinance, did somewhat of a nationwide survey to look at ordinances and other jurisdictions and found some provisions that we were lacking that would be helpful. And also, as Irene noted, we had a telecommunications telecommunications attorney take a look at our ordinance as well and give us some thoughts. But you you have the the draft in front of you showing you what edits have been made. And some of the edits that come from the committee based on their nationwide review are provisions that state, for example, that guy wires can't interfere with use of the right of way. That fans that are used to cool the antenna and associated equipment can't produce noise in violation of the county noise ordinance. That deployments can't prohibit us or prevent us from complying with ADA and how we maintain our sidewalks. Requiring annual certifications from the vendors about what equipment they are or are not using. We've adjusted our notice requirements with respect to appeals and variances to make sure we can comply with the shot clocks imposed by the FCC, which state we have to address applications and process them in certain timeframes. Initially, we proposed a setback of one thousand feet in between new towers that are installed by suppliers. And we would propose to reduce that one thousand foot setback to five hundred feet based on recommendations from Mr. Lay, our telecommunications counsel. And then, as stated in my memo from yesterday, there are five edits that the council should discuss a little bit more in detail. We do have recommendations from the PSC and we've got some comments from Tim Lay and from staff. And some guidance from the council is needed as to, you know, how we address those edits. The first of those is the definition of small wireless facility with respect to the size limits. So we adopted a twenty eight cubic feet size limit for equipment boxes right from the FCC order. The committee has recommended that we state the boxes should be twenty eight cubic feet or the minimum amount necessary to provide service, whichever is less. We also spoke with the county about what they're doing and noted that they've adopted a size of twelve cubic feet, which is less than the FCC order. And we asked if you know, the industry's been pushing back. And the answer was, well, the industry so far has actually found a way to comply with that twelve foot standard. Half has pointed out that it would be difficult for us, not having an engineer on staff to determine what size limit would be the minimum reasonably necessary to provide service. The county suggested we we could have the applicant certify as to what size is the minimal necessary. Upon reflection, you know, I would probably recommend that we stick with a hard and fast number because it's easier to enforce. You know, if twenty eight's two feet, we could do what the county is doing and just reduce ours to twelve because it seems to be working for the county.
But let me, let me interrupt for a second, if I might, because I, you're making a lot of good points. But I think it'd be, we'll, we'll, we'll stay, we'll stay with this more if we actually make this interactive as we move along and actually work through the ordinance, okay? Because we really do want to get this out tonight. And and I'll say, having looked through this, there's a lot of enormously good work here that the committee has done, Iran done. I'm glad you've brought on the board this consultant. I personally have a bunch of very specific points arising from your memo, and I think we need to go through those. I'm sure my colleagues have others. But I'd almost like to take it up page by page. So we just systematically work through this.
Okay.
And if that's all right, and then make the points you were going to make as we work through them and we come to them. Okay, is that okay?
The ordinance itself, go through the, yes.
Yeah. So you're you're actually turning to a key point that's raised on page three of the ordinance. Before we get there, I have a question on page two. We had in the original ordinance, the word to minimize damage to trees. Now we have avoid damage to trees. And my question to my colleagues is how realistic is that? In other words, when people are putting in infrastructure, you know, you can add, they can try to avoid, but I don't think you can guarantee you're going to avoid all trees, including without potentially doing something. So what's, I'm concerned that that language becomes problematic to enforce.
Well, no, well, my only question is, is I'm looking at that right, that, you know, the sentence right before that or the phrase right before that says, the purpose of this article is to regulate the same to enhance vehicular and pedestrian safety and avoid interference with motorists and pedestrian sightlines. Is that not the same thing?
As avoiding tree?
Yeah, I mean, because you could say
About the health of our tree canopy.
I know, I'm, I mean, I'm totally, I'm all over that. But I guess, but to your point, Barney, if I'm, if I'm installing some stuff and I got to have a truck in the tree in the street because I've got some guy in a thing, you know, installing one of these cell towers or cell, cell things. I can't avoid interfering with motorists and pedestrian sightlines because I got a big truck there.
Oh, no, I think there's a saying, once the, once the equipment is installed. So there are certain, the way it works, and again, this is just for my little Pepco streetlight thing. It looks like it's going to be paying dividends for a while. There's certain parts of the pole that are reserved for certain types of equipment. So you need to have so much clearance off the ground. And then you, from there, there's, there's like different types of equipment that have their like space on the pole. And that's, once that's filled up, you have to go to another pole, right? So one of the things that the town can actually regulate is design standards. So one of the things that we're making sure is it's not like the equipment is going to be here and then here and then here, you know, we want there to be some sort of consistency. But then the the second part is really about we, the tree canopy. And when Pepco comes through, for example, you know, obviously they inform the town, but there's, there's sometimes some crazy kind of cutting, trimming that takes place. So what we're trying to do is, is because there's so much more equipment, you have the antenna plus a box for every single company. So because you can have, every company has their own antenna and has their own box, associated box. That's going to create a lot more problems potentially for the the trees themselves, the the tree clearance that's needed, I should
Okay, so so basically what you're saying is if they're not, if they're going to be placing these things.
I'm sorry, let me, you had a point of order you wanted to raise.
I started before we start going down this path of reviewing thirty pages word by word.
No, it's not thirty.
It's not thirty, no, it's thirty pages. And there's not that many.
Okay, I just would like to understand because German is at nine o'clock and I just want to understand what the rules of order are for reviewing the language. Because typically this is like a work session kind of of activity and we're not doing it in a work session structure now. So what are, what are the rules of, of like, what, what, what are?
Fair enough.
What's the guidance for this process?
Okay. I'll offer my my view about it. First, I am willing to extend tonight's session, I'll say to nine thirty. I wouldn't want to go past that. The, I think there's a lot of this language, which frankly is straightforward and not something we it's kind, we don't spend time discussing, this is my my sense. There are some specific points that we require discussion, but I'll leave it to my colleagues. If we if we do not cover this tonight and instead have it in a work session, then we still have to have, how many days, Ron, before we have a public hearing?
So technically just six, according to our charter, but as a matter of practice, we do it meeting to meeting thirty days.
But we could do it in less. So let's say, let's, if we had a separate, we're just making sure I'm looking at options for my benefit, my colleagues. If we had, if we called for a second, a separate work session, you know, some day next week, we could, if we then took it up at that point, we could then still have the the public hearing at our November council meeting.
Correct, yep, and adoption in November.
Okay, so that's an option. It's up to the my colleagues if that's what you'd like to do and we'd leave here up here.
No, I mean, if we get through by nine thirty, great, but I I would, I don't want to rush it, but I also
That's a fair point, too.
Want to make sure that we're not without some constraints.
No, you've raised a good point, so I'm happy to, that's, so do I take a crack at seeing if we can get through this or do you want to just, okay.
Yeah, I think go ahead.
Yeah, I think we should.
No, I just think we should, you know, I mean, time is of the essence, I think. So we just want to get through as much as we can. Maybe we need an additional work session to work out the rest of it.
My, my comment is about it, all of the Ron's memo brought up a number of issues. And if he could take us into the ordinance where that's covered and then let us discuss those points first, because those are the ones that I think Tim Lay has said these may give you some problems in terms of enforcement or being able to administer them. And then most of the others, I think, are kind of pro forma. So I I think if we could spend some time understanding.
So that would take, if we, if we jump to that conclusion.
Yeah.
Then the first issue we would take up is on page three, the one that Ron just discussed, which is the size. I'll say, my perspective, your thought, Ron, that we simply put in twelve cubic meters, cubic feet is a sensible way to go, but I'll leave it, have some discussion on it.
And where, where would he, where is that, the three?
Page three, point number three.
Three, right.
Yeah, so we just insert there.
And twelve instead of twenty eight.
Change twenty eight to twelve.
Change twenty eight.
And the idea there is that it's in line with what the county currently has.
We would, we would delete the, the language is a size that is no larger than necessary.
Right.
That point.
No more than, just would say no more than twelve cubic feet.
Make it twelve.
Right, okay.
Okay, got it. Done. We all set?
Yep.
Okay, good. Ron, next point.
What's your next point?
Okay.
Point us to where we are in the text.
Yes, indeed. All right, we're going to go down to page five. And the bold, underlined paragraph eight. So here, this is where the committees recommended a detailed deployment plan be submitted with an application that's forward looking. The vendor would note what proposals they have for the next two years. The committee's thought there was, this would enable the plan, the town to do some planning in in terms of where these facilities might be located, what we, what we might expect in the future would help us understand what we should approve now. Tim noted that we might get some pushback here, but there are arguments on both sides. And my recommendation was, we can leave it in, and if it becomes problematic, reconsider it later, reconsider whether we need to change it later.
No, I like, I, I like that. I did have a question on that as well as to, why are we concerned? And and this is something that I I need to be educated about is, why are we concerned about something within five hundred feet of the town limits? Why, why would we want a deployment plan for something outside our town limits?
The the five hundred measurement basically is, is where, where coverage is expected to come from. Coverage can basically be, can extend over five hundred feet. And, you know, Beth may be able to comment more. But that's my understanding that that's where that came from. We want to know where the towers are five hundred feet around our borders because we can, we can get service from those locations.
Well, so there's an expense
You don't need another tower, in other words, within that five hundred foot envelope.
There's an expense associated with the installation, obviously, of this equipment. The, the, the discussion occurring around the PSC was that these installations would likely occur along growth corridors. So your, your Connecticut Avenue, your, your Wisconsin, East West Highway, maybe not Bradley, right? And also with the amount of development going on in Bethesda, right? Because everything is line of sight. So I think there was an attempt here at just ensuring that we understand holistically what's going on in the area.
Why do we care? I mean, I, I would, I would actually suggest that within the five hundred, if they put towers up at the boundary of the town, that benefits us because then we don't need it, we don't need towers more than more than 500 feet away from that. So I'm, I, and I don't, I don't really care about the equipment.
But the flip side is it can be used as, if we do know that something is going to be installed on Connecticut, then do you really need something?
You know, I, I, that is, that is, we, we talked a lot about this in the PSD, about the engineering of these things. That's going to be decided by where they need the signal and what equipment they're using. So my, my concern is just, I, I don't know why we would, that would be, if I was, they would say, I'm not going to give you the plans for stuff that's outside of your jurisdiction. And I don't think we need it. I mean, I think it just raises, they could, they're going to get, they're probably going to get pissed off enough about it.
Is it the 500 feet or the town limits? Because I, I would be personally interested in understanding what's happening on Connecticut, Wisconsin, that's within a certain, it may not be 500 feet, but, but that would be close to the town, personally.
Tell me why. I don't understand why, I don't understand why we would care.
So.
The more, the more signal that they can get on the periphery of the town, the better off the town is.
I just, that's- I, 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 I would, I'm comfortable taking it out also, I tend to agree. I had the same question when I went through. And I can see the point that you will have somewhat better understanding, I guess, of the whole system, if you know how it relates to towers that are outside the town, but near the town. But frankly, I think we're still going to get that information anyway. In other words, when they, I, I, and I should say, I strongly support the condition as a whole. I think it's great that the committee has suggested this. But I think having that sense of, hey, not, don't just tell us what you're asking today, but what you're going to ask going forward is really important. So wholly in support of that. But I think we actually have a stronger case in saying, we're really focused on the town. So if they, if we find out, for example, that in the next two years, they're essentially leaving a gap in some section, they're not putting a tower in the town, and we say, why? No, it's because across the street or block away outside the town, we're putting in a tower. Now we've got an explanation. But I think in terms of what we ask for on paper, I think we'll have a better, more traction to hold to the position we have if we're not asking for material outside the town and we're focused on what the town is looking for. That's just my, that's my reflection.
Yeah, we're, and, yeah, I, we, we looked at the prior PSC, we looked at best practices in other communities that are already started, where these have already started deployments. And what, they're going to get deployed where they need signal. In other words, you know, there, if there's a market, you know, a lot of people have 5G equipment in the town, they're going to want to put equipment here. And we want them to put equipment here for, for our own purpose, to get a 5G capability within the town. So the, you, you, we just wanted to, we wanted to make sure that when they did that, that they were being reasonable on how they deployed. We weren't objecting to the fact that they had, you know, they could, they could ring the rest of the county with towers if they want. But they can't penetrate the town, because they have to have towers within the town to get service. So I'm, I, and like Barney said, once, once we know what they want to do within the town, it, it, just so it covers the town, is what we really care about. We really want them to cover the town. So I don't, I just don't see any benefit in asking them for something which may raise their shackles about even doing this. I, I don't think they, I, and Ron, you can, from whatever, from your, what you've studied so far, I don't think-
For me, from my limited knowledge in this area, I would, I would think that they're like, they'll likely have a deployment plan for the town and, at once. And, and not delay things for, for two years, because I, you know, imagine their deployment costs are going to be extensive, and it makes economic sense for them to, to do the whole town at once. I, you know, that would be my, my guess. I, I can't say that's going to happen.
Are we, are we okay taking out that clause?
500 feet?
Okay, so that comes out, but we keep in the rest. Okay?
Take out.
Next point.
Take out or within 500 feet of town limits.
Okay. All right, next, next point. When we first adopted this ordinance, and we're going to go to page six of 10, and look at sub-paragraph four at the bottom. When we first adopted this ordinance, we imposed a limit of five antennas per pole. As I had initially drafted it, it was three. But we decided that we wanted to promote more co-location, so we raised the limit to five. The committee's now suggesting three, because, and you've got the, the PSC memo there, because each antenna can have its own equipment box. So five equipment boxes with five antennas could relate to a lot of clutter. The county has noted that antenna are all different sizes. Some are pretty small, like the strand mounted antenna, if, if folks have seen those. So we may not even want a limit of fives, as suggested by the, the county. And instead to do, you know, some sort of volumetric or or other standard, I don't have a better-
Can I ask a good question on that, Ron? Is there a, a benefit to saying no less than three? And then you kind of leave it up to however many, I mean?
I, I, I don't think that would work, because if a provider were to say, we need one antenna here, we couldn't tell them no, if they needed that one antenna there for their-
So I was just thinking, co-locating, if you say no less than, forcing co-location, but-
Yeah. Well, well, but to, but to your point, Joel, Tim Lay has suggested that paragraph seven on the same page, which says, "All facilities shall be constructed in a manner to allow co-location." I'm sorry, number six. So that's a, you know, indirect requirement to accomplish what you just suggested.
One of the reasons this also came up from five down to three was that knowing everything is different sizes, there's going to be a, a weight associated with the installation of this equipment. And potentially, a lot of the Pepco poles will not be able to sustain a lot of weight. So it would require the replacement of a pole. The county doesn't have a very good track record with, they can install a new pole, but they don't necessarily remove the old pole in a timely manner. So part of the reason that the, the committee was recommending this was the less likelihood of a new pole being put in, therefore leaving another, the, the, sorry, the older pole for a, a longer period of time than what is aesthetically, you know, pleasing. And yet there's the balance of it to say, if you're going to have a new pole, then maybe it could have even more, so they were, they were trying to say, you know, work with what we got, rather than having a bunch of new poles coming in.
I, I go back to what you've learned about telephone poles, is that the telephone company's going to want to see what's being installed in the area of the pole.
Yep.
And if there's, you know, if the weight's not going to sustain five cellular installations, they won't, they won't let them put it-
They won't allow them to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, 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 I think putting a hard number in there is a good idea. And-
Well, let me clarify that. They will say it's okay, as long as the carrier plays, pays for a new pole.
Oh, no, these are-
They'll say, sure, put them on there.
These regulations are about this-
I suppose, unto existing poles.
Yeah, this is existing poles, right? We're talking about existing poles.
Yes.
Right.
So I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable going, going back down to three. I'm fine with that. And I, and I traditionally thought about five, so I'm comfortable going back to three.
Okay.
But the main reason I am, is that we have a variance process, right? So if it turns out the equipment is small and light, and the, the fourth guy comes along and says, you know, I, I want to use these poles, say, fine, we'll give you the right to do it. That's all, that's all that really matters. It's not saying it can't happen, it just means you're going to have to come and talk to us and prove to us that the equipment costs-
Got it.
So I would, I, that's why I think-
What I, what I, what I was saying is, I would go with three.
Yeah, so we're done. Okay. We're, we, we have violent, we're in violent disagreement, Ron. Violent agreement, Ron, is what I meant to say.
But these are subjects, it's explicit that variances can be sought in this.
Oh, yeah.
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 Just making sure. So you were going to six, what did you want to change the language to in six on that page?
Ron, what was your next point, did you want to raise with us?
We, we don't have to touch number six. So next, we're going to go to tree pruning, which is on page the top of page seven.
C, it's seven C, isn't it?
Yep.
That's right. So there's a, a new sentence proposed, "Trees may not be pruned to accommodate a communications facility." You know, except as necessary to prevent
minimally necessary.
Prohibition of service. So, you know, there, Tim noted it, it seemed odd to impose that restriction on a wireless carrier if we're not imposing the same restriction on other operators in the right of way.
Well, what restrictions do we impose on Pepco and, and the telecoms?
So under, under state law, you know, Pepco has a franchise to operate in the town. It's a, a state right afforded by statute. And that statute provides we have the option to impose reasonable regulations. Historically, we've not found a need to do so. Pepco has worked cooperatively with staff with respect to work done in the right of way. You know, there's a, a cooperative arrangement where they let us know, you know, what, what they're going to do, and, and we sign off on it. But we haven't actually adopted any regulations in, in, you know, on our books.
I, I, personally, I kind of like this one. I mean, even though we don't impose it on Pepco, and Pepco's been cooperative about the pruning stuff in the town, it, it doesn't hurt us to put this in there for these folks. There's nothing, there's no detriment to the town to have this included.
Well, let me, let me just stop pondering that, frankly. As I understand it, and I know you got both Irene and you reached much more about this than I, but 5G is really actually a continuum, it's not a set point of bandwidth, of wavelengths, right? And the shorter the wavelength, the more capacity can be delivered. But the more towers you need, it's easier to interfere with short wavelengths and longer wavelengths.
Faster, faster 5G requires more equipment.
Higher frequency.
Higher frequency.
It's a higher frequency.
Right.
And it requires more equipment, shorter wavelengths, so higher frequency, I'll say frequency. So, but with higher frequency, it is, there, there's a greater risk or concern of interference by branches, trees, and other things, right? That's, that's why they have to put in more poles. The higher the frequency, the more poles they need to provide the coverage because of the interference of the-
Or antenna they need.
No, it, it, actually, the higher the frequency, the better penetration.
Better.
The better the penetration. The lower, that's why you can't get cell service inside your house, or, you know, or a lot of places where you go inside and you try to get cell service. This is especially true for emergency services, when they get into commercial buildings, they lose their, their cellular capability. That's because it's a low frequency, you can't penetrate. Higher frequencies have more penetration. So emergency services like higher frequencies.
Okay, then I would-
You need more mistake higher frequencies.
So what requires having more poles? With higher frequencies, you need more poles, right?
Yeah, just because the distance of the signal, the signal fade, if, if you look at-
Signal fades faster.
Yeah, if you look at a low frequency signal, it's this.
Yeah.
Okay. So that, and it, and so it goes a long way. But to get that same endpoint here with a high frequency, what you're doing is the signal's going like this. So you've taken that and moved it here.
I understand, okay.
So it's-
But, but the high frequency actually can penetrate more easily.
Yes, it penetrates better.
Okay, okay.
Into, into buildings and things like that. But the, like I said, there's no harm with this being in here.
Let me, let me ask them about the wording, because I, "Except as minimally necessary to prevent an effective prohibition of service." It seems to me, I guess what troubles me is-
That should be provision, yeah, that's a typo, I just noticed that.
The effective provision of service.
Yes.
All right, that, that helps my understanding. Maybe, maybe that was just a test of how stupid I am, that I didn't figure out it was a misspelling. But as a, as a master misspeller myself, I don't always notice it in others. So support a structure, "Except as minimally necessary to prevent an effective provision of service."
No, wait, to prevent, to prevent the prohibition. Yeah, it is prohibition, we're preventing the prohibition, "Except as minimally necessary to prevent."
Well, here's what I'm getting at, all right? And so maybe, maybe I, maybe I can, I can, I appreciate what, what Rich has said. But I, I don't think the standard can just be prohibition of service. In other words, there could be a quality of service that is materially improved if they did cut a limb of a tree. And, and if they did that, that could, you know, help the homes nearby, but also potentially avoid having to put in another tower, more, more, more readily. And I was, there's some trade off there, and I, I wouldn't, I just feel, I just felt the way I read it, it was so rigid.
Okay, so you could say, "Except as minimally necessary for effective service."
That I'd be more comfortable with.
Sure.
That I'd be more comfortable with.
For effective service.
For effective service.
Necessary for effective service.
Minimally necessary? Is that, is that where you-
Yeah.
Put an adverb in front of necessary, minimally necessary? Is that the right way to draft it?
You could, you could leave minimally out, "Except as necessary for effective service."
And Barney, I, I thought of something else that may have been a better answer to your question as to what regulations apply to Pepco, let's say, for, for trimming trees. And I'm reminded that around 2012 or thereabouts, that the PSC ordered Pepco to undertake very aggressive tree trimming measures to prevent blackouts, because it was a, a real problem in the area.
Oh, sure.
If you remember that, and a lot of our trees got, got topped.
Well, I think, Ron, you get the sense of where we're heading. I say, I think there's general support for this language, if I can represent that. But can you work with the wording a bit with Irene?
Yep.
And try to simplify it and make it a little less, okay.
Yep.
What's the next point?
Okay. Just making, making myself a note. All right, last one.
Yay.
And we are on, last of the big issues, we are on page seven, sub-paragraph F, yes.
Yeah.
"In the case of a pole replacement, the original pole shall be removed by the owner of the pole no later than 30 days following the installation of the new pole." So if we're in the instance where an existing pole is being replaced, we want the, the, you know, the prior unused pole to be removed. Tim Lay's questioned whether we can do that under Maryland law, and staff has pointed out that it has happened in the past, and, and 30 days is, is too short. It, it can take, you know, 90 days in the best case scenario.
It's my understanding that the ZTA language, and, and Ron, I don't know if you had an opportunity to listen to the work session on Monday, but they specific, gave a specific time to remove the older pole. This did come up as a question mark. I don't remember if it was 30 or 60, that's the problem, I didn't put in my notes. But that has been put in as one of their modifications to the ZTA.
Okay.
So how about we just change it to whatever they're-
Sorry?
Why don't we just change this to whatever they-
Yes, so whatever the county decided.
So he needs to research what the county-
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
That, that were all, those were all the big issues.
All right. The, so that covers all those major issues, we've made good progress. I just had one other issue that I want, I go back to the one I started with on, in the preamble, intent and purpose was changing minimized to avoid damage to trees. I just find it hard to think we can avoid damage to trees. I think minimizing was fine.
Yeah, I would tend to agree.
Yeah. It's, it's, yeah, why don't we, that's fine, both places.
Minimize.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of avoid.
What was it that?
Well.
I'm sorry, Ron?
I, are you, are you suggesting changing avoid interference with motorist and pedestrian sightlines, change that to minimize? I think their, their avoid is okay, because-
Yeah. I was only referring, I was only referring to the change, the proposed change language from, from-
Okay. Okay, gotcha.
Minimizing to avoid. Minimizing is a strong word. I meant avoiding is, I, I just think it's gonna be impossible to.
Okay.
That, that includes saplings, for heaven's sakes. And I, you know, I just don't know how you.
Can I, are you, are we on your, the preamble?
Yeah.
I just took the, the second whereas, we need to add operation in the placement, construction, operation, just to be
Okay.
Consistent with what we have and the intent and purpose under the chapter.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah. For me, otherwise, I think the committee did a great job on putting this together. So I'm just. Yeah. Yeah, it's Ron and Tim, Tim and the committee and you. So thank you. I'm okay with all the rest of the sections. That's it for me.
What, we're only eight minutes after nine.
You know.
Before we go home though.
Teamwork.
No, but, but, but it's good to have the, the threat for, not the threat, but the force.
Process, all about the process.
I've got 19 more minutes of material.
More minutes of material for us.
We have enough work sessions. I'm glad that we were able to get this done in the council session. The, um, one other, um, issue to bring up quickly about, because we're all asked this by, by Todd, is our response to the study done for traffic and whether there should be a speed bump put on.
Blackthorn.
Blackthorn. Uh, you saw the results that there's not enough traffic. Uh, how do people feel about that?
I, I wrote back to him and said, I'm fine with it, the putting the speed bumps in.
I'm sorry to.
I, it's okay. For me, it's okay to put the speed bumps in.
So basically did not adhere to our policy?
Yes, to, to provide a variance to our policy. And I, I'm gonna have a justification for this. Because when we studied, when we studied, again, this was the PSC recommendation to, to change the rule, to changes. The PSC recommendation was essentially to allow residents, especially.
Now, Dave, Dave heard this issue coming up. Actually, he got the text from Todd saying, get in there, Dave.
We, we had a lot of debates about.
That's right.
One of the debates was is that essentially, if you got enough people on a block to agree to, uh, uh, either a traffic pump or a, uh, a, a speed, what, what else did we do? There were a couple of other things we recommended. And then the council said, well, let's not, let's make it more strict. Well, the, one of the things we talked about in the committee was it for a street like, was it Rosemary that they were asking?
Blackthorn.
Blackthorn. That street is only really the, for the purposes, anything in the town is for the residents. The only other purpose for it to be used is as a cut through. So if the residents want to stop some of the cut through traffic and they don't care that they have to go over a couple of speed bumps to get to where they're going, why do we care? I mean, that's why we have the variance process. And so I'm all in favor for, especially for a street like, like Blackthorn, that if the residents want it, put it in.
That's just other thoughts?
Well, I'm.
Just to clarify, they, just to clarify, we can't just put it in. We'll have to go through a public hearing process.
I feel like the rules are there for a reason and, and these were rules that were modified recently, I believe, in terms of um, lowering the standard a little bit in terms of what will kick in this speed bump. I, yes, this is the, uh, section of Blackthorn that's abutting, um, Connecticut. But I don't understand how there's any cut through traffic from there. They, because they, it, it has to be residents that are doing the speeding, if that's what's indeed, which isn't following, you know, the, the numbers. Because if you, i- if you're coming off of Connecticut, which is tough to take a left, or even if you're taking, why would you take a, a right from Connecticut to go down Blackthorn to then take a right to then go on to East West Highway, which you have to take an awkward left?
What they're doing, what they would do is, is the congestion on Connecticut is so bad and they wanna continue to get to Connecticut. They'll, they'd cut down there and go all the way around down Meadow, eventually down Meadow, Blackthorn to, you know, and then get to Meadow and get, cut over Meadow to, to circumvent a lot of the traffic. And that's what, that's what they do. When you looked at this, when we looked at the traffic study from whatever it was, a, a significant amount of cut through, come through all of those streets along Connecticut during the rush.
Sure.
So.
But they were exiting or entering off of Blackthorn?
It, it depends, time of day. So if they're, if they're coming into town and there's a congestion, you know, and stopped up from East West Highway to, to Bradley, they're looking, looking for the first cutoff and they'll cut down the first street they come to, which is Blackthorn. So I mean, I, again, that, and I, I wanna go back to, it was the council that strengthened the regulate, the, the recommendation of the PSC. The PSC's recommendation was essentially this, kind of the same as the others. If a substantial number of residents wanted something in their block and there was enough and it was uh, engineered so that, or it could be engineered so that it was acceptable. The, the PSC recommended make that, make that the, the change. Came to the council, the council made it more, more rigorous, not the PSC recommendation. It was the council. So.
On the council's time, I don't know if you were yet, Irene, but the, when we had this discussion, um, I was actually sympathetic to the PSC's recommendation. About the council did decide they thought the standards were still necessary because there are a lot of residents who are concerned about the number of speed bumps. And we did have to have standards. So that was accounted for that. That then led to a discussion of, well, what about the speed signs? Because we just installed one on East at that time and it was demonstrating to be quite valuable. And, and so we put in place the policy for asking for a speed sign where, um, it still has to go through a public hearing, but no evidence has to be cited. In other words, if residents want the speed sign, uh, they can basically, they'll get it. Provided that there's sun and you can light the sign, but, but there's not a requirement for standards. Uh, and so the, that would be the other potential option here, which is that we don't, um, if we want to hold to the ordinance, we invite the residents to request a speed sign and start to, to at least do something to see if that matters and then revisit the question down the road. Um, I, anyway, I'll leave it at that as just playing to put another option on the table, but I wanna make sure everyone speaks to the point.
Dave, were they informed of the results, the traffic results?
They, not that.
Okay.
And how many residents, by the way, signed the petition?
I think it was the number of, it was all, every resident.
There, there's a lot of new homes on there with very young children, so that probably led to, I, I understand it. I understand it. Personally, I'm more inclined on informing them to see what their reaction is and I'm, I'm very willing to entertain a, a variance process for it. Have them come in, a public hearing, I should say.
Joel? Yeah, yeah, I, I support that. I, I like speed humps. I mean, I don't like them that much, I have to say, driving over them down Maple, you know, all the way through, but I'll take it over red lights, traffic lights anytime in the day. Any, any, so yeah.
Joy?
I'm sorry, because I, I supported something different than what you just said. You support the speed hump.
I mean.
I support a public hearing to.
I'm comfortable with the public hearing.
That's, that's all we'll be deciding tonight.
Yeah, and I, I think Todd just said we have to have a public hearing, right?
If, if.
Regardless?
Well, if, if we wanted to, to, uh, uh, override our, our ordinance and, and permit this, yes, we'd have to have a public hearing to do that.
But if you, if you feel like you want a public hearing for it, I, I support that. I mean.
Yeah, and I, I would support the public hearing and you know how much I love speed bumps.
I would, I'd be, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of that as well. I'm fine with having a public hearing. Uh, but I will say that, that in making this exception, um, we are gonna have to reconsider that whole policy because this is not, we are, there, there is no, there is no extenuating circumstance here like we normally try to see in a variance for some change in people's yards. If people, if people, if, if we grant this, um, I have, I, I would feel very hard pressed to ever say no to another segment, another street wanting to have speed bumps.
I, 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 I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you. I, I'm just saying, when I looked at this particular segment of street, the only use of, of going, using that street is by the resident, as legitimate use. The, the, no town person would, would take that cut up to Connecticut after, that we just wouldn't do it. So the only legitimate use of that street is by those residents. So that's.
I, I hear that, but I'm not sure that's.
It opens up.
I'm just saying it opens up the ordinance to.
It opens up everyone that, every street that abuts Connecticut. That's the precedent that's being set.
And maybe that's fine. Maybe we should eventually say that's okay to have a lot more speed bumps in town.
Probably need for a discussion, study it.
So the.
So anyway, but I think the agreement for tonight is we'll have a public hearing.
So we'll have a public hearing on the speed hump request?
Right, exactly.
Okay. And Barney, one more thing we need to go back to before you adjourn is with the revisions that you've agreed to with respect to the telecom ordinance, would you like to have a motion to introduce?
Uh, well, I think what we need, the, we need to see a revised version. Um, and can that be sent to us tomorrow and we can do this by email or is that a?
You can introduce, you can introduce as amended tonight and review it tomorrow if you'd like.
I'm sorry, what would be the language?
The best, the best way to proceed here is to introduce as amended this evening. And then you can review it. And if there are any issues, we'll have to bring it back to the.
Okay. So. So moved. Irene, you wanna make?
Oh, because you already seconded something I didn't say.
Irene should have the honor of making a motion.
I, I am making a motion to update the, uh, telecom ordinance, um, as amended during our discussion.
Second. Is there a third? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Unanimously approved.
Ron, is there anything else you need to have?
No, no, that was it. And what I put in so far for the pruning sentence, and it can, we can change it at the next meeting if needed. Trees may not be pruned to accommodate a communications facility, pole tower or support structure, except as minimally reasonably necessary. Because that's a.
I, I, I hereby testify that I am brain dead. Uh, my, 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 my jet lag has entirely, has entirely, I, I, I woke up at 3:30 Tuesday morning and at 5 o'clock this morning. So I am, I am off duty. And, and, uh, even, even if Joel wasn't gonna bring down the hammer, I'm probably gonna bring down my head. So, so, uh, best is that you send around the revised wording in the next day and we look at it.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you. It was good discussion tonight.
You know, just so I know what to advertise. Uh, I guess there's an option for one on the middle of the clock. Uh, Joe recommended two in a series. I assume that we would take Joe's recommendation.
Yes. Right? Right, okay, good.
And that they, it didn't in any way, um, make the, like, the reasonable standards. So just letting them know that.
Yeah, so we are, we are considering a variance to the ordinance. That's, that has to be.
Not an ordinance.
Not an ordinance, right. But we're considering a variance, we're considering an exception to the policy.
Correct.
Apparently, right off, but we are looking into something which we know does not meet the standard. So they ought to know that.
Correct.
All right. May I adjourn? Adjourned, thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.